We'll call it an order tonight's Auburn Committee of the Hall for our November the 19th, 2024 meeting. The City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Hall from November the 5th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Questions on tonight's agenda for the City Manager? Any questions from the dais for the City Manager related to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Well, there's been some significant interest from the Ward Two residents regarding the Cherokee Road MUD Town Homes Conditional Use. So just let everybody know, I intend to request that that item 10A2 be postponed till 3 December. That's why it won't be this evening. And the reason is we need to get some additional input from the interested parties. And the council only received the official package on it Friday, this past Friday night. If the postponement is approved, then we will not have a public hearing on that item tonight. Again, if it is approved, we will not have a hearing tonight. That doesn't preclude anybody from sticking around if they choose to, to make comments during the citizens' open session at the end of the thing if they prefer. And if it is delayed, then there'll be a full public hearing on the 3 December meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Griswold. And I certainly agree with you. I believe this is a situation that the council could use more time to understand, hear from our citizens, hear from all the stakeholders involved, and before we are asked to make a decision. So I'll be supporting your request for postponement.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on tonight's agenda for the City Manager? Okay. Is there a move to adjourn the Committee of the Hall?
So moved.
All right. The Committee of the Hall is adjourned. We will start the official City Council meeting at 6 o'clock. And so you are welcome to continue to converse with your neighbors and friends. Thanks. Order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for November 19th, 2024. We certainly welcome everyone who has joined us live. We welcome also those citizens that are listening on WA&amp;I, or they're watching through the city streaming services, welcome to our City Council meeting. Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Hoiblins.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the Committee of the Hall, there was no official business for the City Council, but Councilman Kelly Griswold did notify the audience that he will be asking for a postponement of item 10A2 to December the 3rd, which is two weeks. And I certainly agree with him. And so we'll be asking for that postponement later on in the agenda. If the City Council does approve that postponement, then the public hearing will be held in two weeks. Okay. All right. Under announcements tonight, just a couple of things I'd like to walk through. I want to thank everybody for participating in Veterans Day recently. It was a wonderful Veterans Day with a great crowd and beautiful weather. And what a rich and important day to recognize those who have fought for our freedoms. And I appreciate everybody's support. And again, thank you to our veterans. The state of the city went off really well. I appreciate all the hard work of all of our staff. Appreciate everybody that joined us that evening at the Gooch Center. Hope you're more informed about what has gone on in our community and what will go on in our community. And I certainly, on a personal level, congratulations to those that were recognized with Mayor's Lamp Lighter Awards. There were some tremendous stories told of outstanding people that are doing great work on all of our behalf in this community. I want to remind everyone that this Sunday night at First Baptist Church, Opa-locka, there's community-wide Thanksgiving service that is open to all of us at 6 o'clock, and you are welcome to attend. The tree lighting service will be held on campus in front of Sanford Hall on Sunday, December 1st. And that is a great ceremony that I've been asked to participate in along with President Roberts. It is for all of us, not just this campus, but all of us here in our community. I want to say congratulations to Auburn High Baseball Coach Matt Simo, former Auburn High Baseball Coach Matt Simo, who over the weekend, it was announced he'll be going into the Alabama High School Hall of Fame. He had a tremendous career at Auburn High School, over 32 years, four state championships, and he is now a Hall of Famer, and his induction ceremony will occur in the spring. And I also want to say congratulations to the Auburn High School Girls Cross Country Team. For the sixth time in seven years, they are the state champions of 7A Girls Cross Country. They won by one single point this year. So congratulations to those young ladies, and they work really, really hard. And I know at least one team member is here this evening. We are proud tonight to have a number of scouts with us. And traditionally, when our scouts join us, we ask you to stand and introduce yourself and tell us where you're from, what troop you're from, and what you're studying here tonight. So I know I didn't prepare you guys for that, but if y'all would please do that, we would love to hear from you. And we're certainly happy to have you here tonight. Please stand if you would.
My name is Christopher. I'm the Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 371, and we're here working on our citizenship and community bareback and communication bareback.
Good. Thank you very much. Would the rest of you gentlemen like to stand up and introduce yourselves?
I am Tivo Crumling. I am also with Troop 371, working on my communication citizenship and community bareback.
Good.
I'm Janie Burrow. I'm working on our citizenship and community bareback.
I'm Jason Armstrong. I'm with Troop 371, and I'm working on my citizenship and community bareback.
I'm Amy Gilley. I'm also with Troop 371, working on my citizenship and community bareback.
I'm Jason Peep. I'm also with Troop 371, working on my citizenship and community bareback.
I'm Jimmy Burney. I'm with the City Council, and I'm working on my citizenship and community bareback.
Welcome. We're proud to have you, and certainly we appreciate those that are leading you. And I hope you learn a lot, and you're welcome to come back anytime. And I think anybody up here on this dais would be happy to speak to you if you'd like to speak to them. I know we also have members of the Auburn High School Student Council here tonight. We appreciate y'all taking time to join us. I've enjoyed my time spending with y'all, learning about what you're doing and sharing ideas as far as leadership. And congratulations on you choosing to be leaders at your school, and we're proud to have you here this evening. And finally, I want to...
There's one more scout.
There's one more scout. Okay. I left... I'm sorry. I didn't see you, young man. I apologize.
My name's Allison Bailey. I'm also with Troop 371, working on my citizenship and community bareback.
Good. Thank you. Thank y'all for letting me know that. Sorry, I almost missed you. I apologize. Tonight is the final meeting for our City Engineer, Allison Fraser. She has spent 28 years working at this city in a number of roles, and she has finished out as the City Engineer. She'll be completing her term with us next Wednesday, right before Turkey Day hits. And certainly, Allison, we appreciate your work, your hard work on behalf of this city. This has been an unprecedented time to be the City Engineer. And you have done it to the best of your abilities, and we appreciate your love of our community and your help and your assistance along the way, helping Auburn get to where it is. And we certainly wish you all the best as you move forward in retirement. And I'd like for all of us to join in giving her a big round of applause.
It's like, just like Greg, she loves to be recognized. And so this is her favorite thing. So thank you, Mayor.
She handled it well.
She did.
Congratulations, Allison. All right. Does anyone else from the council have anything they'd like to announce tonight?
Yes, I'd like to recognize another Allison who doesn't like to be recognized for outstanding annual arts sale show. It was tremendous. I hadn't been to one in a year or two, and it was hard to find a place to park, but it was extraordinary. And so, good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Certainly proud of you. Yes, sir.
And I'd like to thank you, Ron, for recognizing all the veterans and everything we had on Veterans Day. And I know I've mentioned this before, but if you please keep it in mind, we lose 22 veterans a day to suicide around in this nation. So if you know of one that's in trouble or needs some help, please have them reach out or you reach out. There's assistance all over the place. So take care of them. They took care of you. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Kelly. Connie?
Yes. Okay. I just want to announce the annual Senior Citizens Thanksgiving Dinner that is held at Boykin Auditorium from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and it's going to be Monday, November, uh, November, February. No.
We in November.
Oh, we in November. Okay. November, Monday, November 25th. And it's free, free food, and it's free to the public, and it's open to the public.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one, if I may.
Yes, please.
Last night, I had the pleasure to attend the Lee County Farm City Banquet, which is a group that forges relationships between the city and farmers to promote agriculture. And the Auburn High FFA was recognized for some of their national achievements, along with the FFA group from Beauregard.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was happy to attend the Sunday Lee County Remembrance Project's Memorial Day, representing the city of Auburn. It was held at the Courthouse Square in Opa-locka. It's a memorial day that recognizes the racial terror lynchings that has occurred in this county in the past. The Equal Justice Initiative hosts and sponsors an essay competition in area high schools. And I was pleased to see that Auburn High School Senior Kyle King won this year's essay contest.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate you attending that. All right. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move forward to Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon. Thank y'all for having me. A bit of a shorter report this week. Callouts for the top 20 candidates for Ms. Auburn are being announced pretty much as we speak on Cater Lawn. They're going to narrow that list down to the top five candidates tomorrow evening. So I'll provide y'all with an update on those candidates and some of the things they're running on at the next meeting. The 2024 Beat Bama Food Drive is wrapping up this Thursday. On Friday morning at 10:00 a.m., the Food Bank of East Alabama is going to announce this year's totals. So excited to beat Bama again this year. And finally, I wanted to say thank you for hosting us, the SGA, at your State of the City last week. It was a really great experience. We had some of our city relations ventee as well here. Brody's in the back there, but he's part of the freshman forum group, and I think it was a really good experience for them. But also, did you see all the great work that's being done in the city year-round that goes unrecognized, especially with the Lamp Lighter Awards? Those are always a great, great touch at the end. But that's all for me this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
All right. Are all the students going to stay in town for the game Saturday? Okay, good. All right. Okay. City Manager's Communications.
There are none. You skipped Citizens Communications on Agenda Items.
I'm sorry. I skipped one. I apologize. We'll go into the Citizens Communications on Agenda Items. I do apologize for that. That is next on our agenda. If you'd like to speak to anyone, if you'd like to speak to the council about any of the items on our agenda tonight, this would be an opportunity for you to come forward, with the exception of three items that have public hearings attached. Those items are 10A1, 10A2, and 10A3. If you would like to speak about those items, there'll be a public hearing, and you'll have that opportunity at that time. But anything else on our agenda, if you'd like to speak to the City Council, this will be your time to come forward. And please share your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. All right. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead to City Manager's Communications.
I have no communications this evening. Are you ready for the Consent Agenda?
Please.
Our first item of business is a consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion. Is second. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Under ordinances, item 9A is a request from John and Annie Torbert to annex approximately 5.03 acres of property located at 5035 Sand Hill Road. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at the November 14th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion. Is second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none. Is there any discussion or is there any questions? Okay. Lindsay with the roll call.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Hoiblins?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B amends Article 2 Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 7 of the City Code of the City of Auburn, to be compliant with the new state floodplain development ordinance developed by FEMA and the Alabama Department of Water Resources to meet or exceed the minimum national flood insurance program requirements. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'd like to deny unanimous consent.
Okay. With that, I'm automatically push this to two weeks?
Next meeting, and then it doesn't need unanimous consent to proceed.
Okay. So just need a sec. We don't need a second on that?
No, it's denied. It automatically goes.
Okay. All right. So we will hear this on December the 3rd.
Under resolutions, item 10A1 is a conditional use request for commercial support uses, contractor storage yard, mini warehouse, warehouse, and wholesale distributors for property located at 3101 Hive Commerce Parkway in the Industrial Zoning District. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 14th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion. Is second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council about this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? We have a motion. Is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a conditional use request for an eight-unit multi-unit development located at the southern terminus of Cherokee Road in the Development District Housing Zoning District. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of four to three at its November 14th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to postpone this item until the 3 December City Council meeting in order for the public and for the council to get more information.
And I second that. Any discussion or questions from the council? All in favor to postpone to December the 3rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll hear this in two weeks.
As a reminder, Mayor, the public hearing goes with it and will be attached to the postponement, as Councilman Griswold covered earlier.
We'll have a public hearing that night for this, for this topic.
Item 10A3 is a conditional use request for commercial and entertainment use, a hotel with banquet and meeting rooms for property located at 126 Ann Street in the urban neighborhood West Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 14th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion. Is second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Megan, will you walk through what type of hotel this is? Kind of a non-traditional.
Yeah, I'll have the planning director put it more eloquently than me, but in essence, the Mises Institute is using this for fellows, graduate fellows, and so it's not necessarily a hotel open to the public. But I'll have our planning director go a little bit deeper.
Yeah, thank you. So in the pre-op meeting, just kind of discussing the type of use and the type of fellows and visitors that the Mises Institute has. It's not really a traditional apartment. It's not really a traditional anything. They have fellows come who do research over the summer, and they're really only here for several weeks out of the year, max. And so the closest thing that the staff felt matched the uses on the property was a hotel motel use. They don't pay the rent, the space, and it has to do with technicality of leasing rooms, paying for rooms, et cetera, that these fellows do not meet. And so just the closest thing to define their use was hotel and motel, and it had other stipulations attached to it.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
If I may ask, how much of this will be new construction and how much of it will be remodeled or repurposed?
Great question. So the, a lot of it is, it's pretty much just going to be all remodeled and internal remodeling, not anything to the outside of the building.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm aware that the Mises Institute also rents out some of the existing property for game day rentals, and that, so that would be a rental situation. And I assume that if they have vacancies or opportunities to do that, they may continue. Just want to know if they could, do we collect rental tax on those properties?
That would be something that we wouldn't know off the top of our head this evening.
Okay. I appreciate if you look into that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And they are in a zone that allows all such things, but yes.
Absolutely. Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes a contract, contract with DNJ Enterprises Incorporated for the full depth reclamation project in the amount of $3,394,838 to include the following streets. Shelton Mill Road from East University Drive to US Highway 280, Farmville Road from North College to Miracle Road, Mill Creek Road from Shell Tumor Parkway to Sand Hill Road, and Webster Road from McMillan Street to Wire Road.
Move for approval.
All right. Have a motion. Is second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Could you describe what full depth reclamation means, please?
I think that the City Engineer on our last City Council meeting would love to tell you all about full depth reclamation.
Didn't want to let her get out of here.
Exactly. Thank you.
I almost made it up. Full depth reclamation is a process by which we will mill the existing asphalt, and then part of the asphalt and part of the base will be ground up and recycled, if you will, mixed with cement, laid back down, and then we'll pave over it. So it's just a process of recycling and reusing some of the existing material. But it provides a very stable base, and the roads that have been chosen are high-volume roads, so we're looking for some longevity.
So the end product is, is the road ready to have a full surface put down on it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Fraser, if that's your final response, you did an excellent job.
I believe I also left one out. It was Tara Lane, wasn't it? Yes. Sorry about that. Yeah, Tara Lane.
All right. If there's no further questions, we have a motion. Is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10C is sent to the vacation of a lighting and utility panel easement located at 369 South College Street, and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the property to Orange Auburn 3 LLC. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second. All right. We have a motion. Is second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council on this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Now, we will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Could you explain what the benefit to the city is by us vacating this, this property?
City Engineer Fraser would love to help this out.
I didn't let her off the hook tonight.
So the benefit is that we still have the same infrastructure. They relocated some of it with Heart of Auburn, so this is just removing the easement that was on the old infrastructure. But we still get the same lighting benefit from it.
And the infrastructure still belongs to us even though we vacate the property?
Just the easement. So the lighting was moved. So the lighting used to be in the area we're vacating, so they moved it as part of the construction.
Still meeting all of our requirements, but it's just been moved because of the new construction project there. So we, it's in a different easement.
Correct. Yes.
Now. And so this is just vacating the old one. We have no use for this property in an easement form.
All right. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10D authorizes a tax abatement for Nashville Wire Products Manufacturing Company LLC located at 1955 and 2039 McMillan Street. The company has purchased a second facility, additional equipment, and anticipates hiring 56 new employees over the next two years and investing in additional $4.7 million.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion. Is second. I certainly want to say thank you to Nashville Wire for expanding in our community, for hiring 56 new employees and making this financial investment in your company. We appreciate Nashville's, Nashville Wire's belief in Auburn. So thank you very much. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Sure. So as we move into Citizens Open Forum, I'd just like to make a short comment related to why maybe some of y'all are here that don't normally come to our meetings. And of course, you're always welcome to come back. Certainly, our community has been consumed by a story related to the welfare of a set of eagles in North Auburn. And I'm speaking personally. I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, and they'll have their opportunity to speak later. This has certainly been a disappointing end to this story. We believed going into the weekend that we had, would have an opportunity yesterday morning to have a discussion with the owners of this property to, to try to find any way to, to save the situation and, and to make the nest and allow the nest potentially to remain. That discussion was not allowed to, did not occur because the nest came down in the meantime. I am sorry that we didn't have a chance to have that discussion. And it's a very disappointing end to this, and I'm sure we'll hear more from you guys a She might want to have something she'd like to say before we get started too.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did make a statement on my social media account this past Saturday, the 16th, after several actions took place by Houston Homes late Friday afternoon and over the course of several days. I just want to let the public know that I continue to be invested in the welfare of the pair of bonded eagles, bald eagles that affectionately have been now named Jim and Pam, whose nest was taken down by Houston Homes late Friday afternoon, November 15th. I remain disappointed with the events that occurred over the last several days, but I do want to let you know that I remain grateful for the passion and the empathy that the community has shown, not only to the welfare of these eagles, but also their concern of how this took place and this course of actions. And also, I just want to let you know that it does not go past me that Houston Homes deceived me personally into thinking that the city would have an opportunity to discuss, as the mayor said, some options to preserve the nest that was in question. I'm also disappointed that so-called professionals would act with such great disregard for community that they want to do business in. So I want to let you know again that those who've reached out across not only Auburn, but also really kind of the whole country who, who are part of the Auburn family, that it is my hope that we can take the events that have taken place over several days and really start to have questions of how we can move forward and that the relationship between development and nature is not, does not go unnoticed for me and that as you have had questions and will continue to have questions about what next steps may happen or occur, I too have questions. And I also want to state that it's, it has been confirmed that Fish and Wildlife are officially investigating the actions that led to the taking of the eagle's nest over the weekend and I expect an outcome that will hold the developer accountable for their actions. And so I know that many of you are here and so it is my hope that over the course of your comments, that we can have some, some dialogue after that about, about what the next steps may be.
We'll move into citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. We ask that you address your comments to the city council. You'll have three minutes to speak to the council and we'll ask that you start by giving us your name and address.
Susan Balt, 1188 East University Drive. November 5th was election night. The right to vote for Americans established by, is protected by the amendments to the United States Constitution as well as federal laws. My right to vote as a woman is protected by the 19th Amendment. It is not dependent on your arbitrary boundaries like those set for short-term rentals in ordinance 3288 as seen above. Most notably, the First Amendment defends my right of free speech. The Second Amendment defends my right to bear arms. No amendment is more important than the other. None of these should be limited by your arbitrary zoning boundaries and none of you on this council have the authority to restrict any of my constitutional rights, but you think you do and the city court system unjustly participates in the attack on its citizens. The Fourth Amendment is supposed to protect US citizens from illegal search and seizure, yet the city of Auburn uses software to openly spy on its citizens who do short-term rentals, again, an abuse based on location. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments are supposed to provide for deprocess and protection of life, liberty and property and to not arbitrarily infringe on property rights. Ordinance 3288 is both arbitrary and a violation of my constitutional property rights. This city council has overstepped its authority with 3288, but some of you, the STR5, Taylor, Griswold, Anders, Parsons and Dawson, you seem to be rather proud to participate in the theft of Auburn citizens' rights. To commit theft, a person must take someone else's property without the owner's consent and with the intent to permanently deprive the owner of its use and possession. Mr. Dawson, you told me directly that you had made someone a promise to restrict short-term rentals. What on earth did you get in return to willingly participate in the attack on the US Constitution and citizens' rights? What about your oath of office? Your pledge of allegiance? Your career as police chief? Why did you disregard all of those promises? And, Mr. Dawson, you stated in a previous meeting that you had never stolen anything in your life. You, along with the four other STR5, did steal something from me and the citizens of Auburn. The five of you have stolen property rights from me. That's why I continue to come up here and remind you of your theft and willfully ignoring our Constitution. You nor this council have the authority to take my constitutional rights, yet the deep pockets of the city make it hard to fight and you allow the city overreach. What would you do to protect your constitutional rights? All I have to do is face some snarky outburst for reminding you of your unpatriotic theft. Some of our servicemen and women have sacrificed their lives protecting my and your freedoms that you all so easily gave away. Stop being bullied by the city and fix ordinance 3288.
Who be next?
Stephen Dixon, 916 Viv Avenue, Auburn. The city of Auburn has shown in the past that it can take decisive action when it chooses to. Whether it's regulating property use or enforcing development standards, the city has demonstrated its willingness to assert authority even when those decisions have significant impacts on its residents. That's why the response to the bald eagle's nest at the Heritage Ridge Development is so frustrating. The council members are claiming that they only learned about this issue in the past few days. That simply isn't true. The eagle's nest and the development at Heritage Ridge were discussed in the June 13th Planning Commission meeting where the nest was explicitly addressed. The city has known about this for months. The council has failed to act instead of working proactively to protect something that this community, this community values deeply. The council waited until it was too late. If council members had been paying attention back in June, they could have started conversations, engaged federal agencies earlier, explored meaningful solutions to protect the eagle's nesting area. Instead, their inaction has allowed this, this avoidable, avoidable loss to happen. The city and council members claim their, their hands are tied because of federal law governs protection of bald eagles. Yes, the federal government does govern the protection of the bald eagles, but the local government dictates the land use. The count, the council has the ultimate power and authority to make land use changes, so it's not too late to make this right. Quit hiding behind the phrase "federal law." That only speaks of the eagles and the nest and each of you know that. You, the city council, have the power to hold Houston Homes accountable. Use legal precedent set with pre-existing non-conforming use to fight back against the developers. Change the land use, halt part of their development, enforce stricter conditions, show this community that you are willing to stand for more than just profit-driven growth. The residents of Auburn are paying attention. People are angry and disappointed. This is your chance to prove that you stand with the people you represent.
Who be next?
Carolyn Anne Carr, 342 Payne Street. I'm the election inspector at Dean Road, Beat Six, Box Five. On election morning, as I approached at 6:30, a little before 6:30, when we asked our poll workers to be there, there was an incredible traffic jam on Dean Road and then I realized it was due to the absolute melee and confusion in the driveway in the parking area in front of the school, in front of the rec center. And frankly, I illegally drove around to get around this and ditched my car in a no parking area so that I could find out what was happening. And there was this very nice security guard blocking the entrance to the parking area between the rec center and the school. I went over to ask what was going on and he informed me that the school board had told him that no one was to be able to park there except school teachers. Frankly, I was so astonished, I actually said, "Are you kidding?" Because, oh, 25 years ago or so, when we were the largest polling place in Auburn, we were having some parking problems and I called the school principal to talk to her about it and she said, "You know, there's a really simple answer to this. We should just ask the teachers to park across the street in the new high school parking lot or in the school board parking lot and we'll just free up the parking lot for you on election day." This has gone, this process has worked for decades and I do underline decades with an S on it and I've never heard any complaint about it. So I was quite startled and I told the gentleman, he needed to let my poll workers park because I had to open the polls at 7 o'clock. He was rather reluctant and I said, "Well, hang on. I'm the last human being on the face of the earth that does not carry a cellphone." So I walked into and called the judge and asked him if he had heard about this and he said, "Not at all." And I said, "Okay, I've told the nice gentleman that he's got to let my poll workers park and he ought to let the voters park. Am I going to get in trouble for this?" And the judge says, "No, go right ahead. Nothing should impede the opening of the polls." So I went back out to unfortunate calls from people of election interference, people are being prohibited from voting, what's going on and all, and told the man he needed to let the poll workers park and that he ought to let the voters park. And he seemed somewhat reluctant, but, and I'm not sure how that worked out because frankly, I had to go move my illegally parked car and get the polls open. I kind of calmed down as the day went on and thought, "Well, I'll go talk to the school board about this. This is unfortunate that this happened."
Ms. Carr, I need you to wrap it up, if you would, please.
Change of personnel, you know, I thought, but some afternoon voters came in and said, "Oh, you've also been pounced on by the school board." And I said, "What?" And they said, "Oh, well, they've now banned all parents from parking in the parking lot when we come to the school." And this kind of got me riled up again, so frankly, I just want to ask, since nobody bothered to communicate with the county, with the judge, with the election manager, with me, I have to say I was, I'm really rather hot about the school board doing this without telling anyone. And I'm not here to find out who at the school board now made that decision to change the procedure.
Ms. Carr, I need you to wrap it up, real quick.
I'm not asking for an apology, although somebody ought to apologize to the voters, but I am asking that y'all, the city, assure.
Ms. Carr.
The voters.
You can, we're going to let you come back at the end of the night if you want to, if you'd like to finish.
Well, I'll finish this off right here. I just want to make sure that this change of procedure has been rescinded before we have another mob scene at the next election.
Who be next?
Mayor, it's very simple. We got a phone call, that's Auburn City Schools. The security guard didn't know. Our school resource officer took care of it and that parking was opened immediately. The city of Auburn doesn't control the election, the county does. There was a mistake, it was rectified. It's over.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jason Haney, I live at 134 Grazia Way. Primarily, I'm here, if I can get my notes. There's a lot to say, a lot of it doesn't involve the city of Auburn and this committee, I understand that. It's a federal issue with the eagles. I just want to say thank you to Beth Witten for your words and your actions and to you, Mayor Anders, for your actions and your words. I hope that you and us as citizens, all of us can work towards a resolution to prevent future concernable actions from not only developers, but all others who wish to do business in the city of Auburn from happening in the future. But I do just want to say thank you, I'm sorry for all the additional stress and work this has caused you, but it's, it's been an issue that's been very close to my heart and thank you all.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Who be next?
Hi, my name is Rhonda Jackson and I live on 1515 VFW Road. Mayor of the city council members, as a citizen of Auburn, I am representing myself and other citizens with a concern for item 9B on the constant agenda. We respect, we respectfully would like to request that this council deny you unanimous content and postpone a vote on the flood zone revision of the city of Auburn. We have emailed the Zone Or- Ordinance Department requesting information and several items, but have received no response in reference to question regarding to previous flood zones revisions that precede, precedes the vision of September 17, 2024 Auburn City Code, Section 18. We would like to see the flood zone ordinance from the city of Auburn from 18, 2018, 2020, 2022 and 2023 to understand why the vision, revision is unnecessary. We ask that this item can be postponed until the next meeting to give time for proper decisions with those of us who have been concerned. There are 200 pages in this amendment and the citizens need time to review and determine what is the reason for this revision on the zoning ordinance and the reason it needs to be voted on at this time. Considering Max from Ward Seven, Scott, and Scott and the head engineer stated that the homes at 1571 VFW Road was not rezoned and it's not being built in the flood plan. Consider there is a zoning ordinance to build in a flood plan and yet they're already building in a flood plan. A halt on the property at 1571 VFU Road and on the other, and any other properties. So we, the citizens, respect, respectfully request that you deny unanimous content and postpone to vote until we are considered addressing and can be determined the zoning of this property in previous years.
You know, we postponed that item for two weeks, earlier in the agenda. So what you ask us to do, we, we've done and so it'll come up on December the 3rd, okay?
Okay.
Alright, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Who be next?
My name is Michael Simmons and I reside at 1978 Wire Road. I've been a resident of Auburn since the late summer of 2016. I've been coming to Auburn for football games and meet friends and family and enjoy the shops and spaces Auburn has to offer for even longer. I graduated from Auburn University with a degree in civil engineering in 2019 and decided to call Auburn home after that. Growing up, I spent most of my weekends and summers in the outdoors with the Boy Scouts of America where I learned about most of my skills I use today and learning and enjoying the scenery and wildlife. For me, we share this space with not just humans, but creatures and animals of all varying sizes. I come tonight to defend the wildlife and hope to persuade the city council of Auburn to show that there might and strength in us. Houston Homes is more way than one. Tonight, I'm not here to point fingers or lay blame to anyone not associated with Houston Homes. Don't see a representative, don't see them apologizing. For everyone in the room that didn't stand up for the purchase of the property, including myself, we all tried in the 11th hour, we all failed in that regard, but all failures come with bleakness and despair. For me, I come to defend the eagles. It wasn't until Thursday night of November 14th that I even know that Auburn had a wild breeding pair of eagles. Not even locate a few miles from my house, nor did I even know that they had recalled this parcel of land home since 2017. But I will digress. What Houston Homes did to that specific tree in the late afternoon of the 15th is what I'm here to discuss. I want to say, down for development, growth and prosperity. It comes to the territory of a growing man, it's a potty like Auburn is. We're making room for new residents like myself in 2016 to enjoy Auburn, but we're also here to remember the wildlife that coexists with us. What Houston Homes did was vile, disgusting and nothing short of corporate greed. The fact that they looked at all of us with straight faces and told Ms. Beth Witten and Mr. Ron Anders that they were going to have a discussion on the 18th while on the property cutting the singular tree down. They lied to the public, they lied to the city council. In a figurative way, they slapped Ms. Witten and Mr. Anders in the face. To even fathom that they didn't lie to the US Fish and Wildlife Service to acquire that said permit and did their due diligence is ignorance for me. For me, Houston Homes need to understand the penalty of their actions. They had 100 different opportunities to do the right thing and unite the residents of Auburn, but instead they chose the exact opposite. With my little research and my little time to discuss- With my little research and my little time to discuss this tonight, I've seen that the property was purchased for seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars to build forty-five homes. I want to reiterate that I'm not against growth, but I'm also a civil engineer. I have a construction background. Houston Homes was probably slated on the high end to make anywhere from twenty to thirty million dollars. They couldn't, they couldn't do anything with the eagle nest. They couldn't eliminate four homes, it couldn't even two to three million dollars. That's fine, it's no big deal. But I want to know what they're doing in the public. They do this to the public people, what are they gonna do in the private people when they sell people to the homes? I mean, without the meeting, and it's, I just want to say that, I want to quote the Lorax, everyone's heard it, "I speak for the trees, the trees have no tongues. Jim and Pam can't speak to us and tell us what Houston Homes did to them. I implore the city council, use their full might to do anything and everything to stop Houston Homes in the future." I'm a prospective home buyer. I want to buy a home in Auburn. I want to raise a family in Auburn. I will never buy a home associated with Houston Homes or their subsidies or realtors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Who'll be next?
Mayor and council, oftentimes, we come, we hear, I'm not here very often.
Name and address.
I'm sorry. Forty-one, twenty-three Creekwater, crossing Nolan Tower. Apologize. I just want to hear, just to express my appreciation for the job you all do. I understand it gonna be yays and nays, that's a fact of life, even among yourselves, but the bottom line, you agree to disagree. But overall, we just want to express our appreciation for the job that you all do. I know a lot of times you get more spanks and bumps and be criticized, but do know, we really appreciate y'all. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Noel.
Thank you.
Who'll be next? Yes.
Hey, my name is Sarah Collins, eight-seventy-five Cohaba Drive. I wasn't able to make it to the last committee meeting because I was under the weather, but I've had a question that I've been thinking on for about the last month. A number of citizens from Ward Seven have got up here repeatedly expressing concerns about a large home being built in their neighborhood that's out of character for what's historically been there. And my question is, what are we doing as a city to make sure that we are providing affordable housing for folks and having our city planning and our zoning such that we're not driving folks out of neighborhoods that they've historically been in? I know I don't have to tell you, zoning has historically, especially in the South, been used to segregate based on race and class. So what are we doing as a city to make sure that we're not continuing that legacy and that we're providing affordable housing to folks and not unnecessarily raising land values or putting a burden on folks?
Thank you. Who'll be next? Yes.
John Cochran, eight-seven-eight Cherokee Road. I just want to say thank you to Kelly and Mayor for postponing the mud thing there today. This was thrown on us all kind of quick, and that's what I want to talk about briefly. The city sent out letters, I got a, you know the letter, five days basically before the planning commission. Now, I looked for timelines, I really didn't find one that said when I have to be notified five days for the sign and stuff like that. I think we may need to look at changing those, giving the citizens a little more time to respond to some of these notices, because that's just not a lot of time for me to look at stuff. The other day, thing I want to do is just kind of plant a seed. And when we're reviewing and talking about this stuff, I would like y'all to pay attention to the wording in the zoning ordinance, particularly ones that say "character" and "adverse effect" to neighboring property. And think about what those are and what they may be. Because Auburn, I've been here for a long time, since seventy-eight off and on, and it does, the neighborhoods have certain characteristics, and we like to keep that intact. And I just wanted to plant those seeds. And then also, we need to decide what is going in there. I have two different pieces of paper. One says it's a mud, one says it's a townhouse. Those kind of need to be done. But I appreciate y'all postponing so we can get more info and more communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Anyone else?
My name is John Benz, and I reside at twenty-three-thirty Lee Road, one-thirty-seven. I wasn't really gonna say anything, I just kind of wanted to come and see what the community had to say about all the things that happened here recently over the past weekend. And as I kind of sat there thinking about, you know, some of the things that go on here, the thing that keeps playing over my head is, at what cost? Auburn has grown tremendously since I've been here in twenty-twenty-one, and constantly as I drive around, I'm seeing less and less green and more and more just thrown up houses everywhere, construction traffic, everything happening in the community. And since I've been coming here since I was a kid, my dad went to Auburn, that wasn't the Auburn that I grew up seeing, and constantly seeing things happening. I mean, I'm sure everybody's heard about, you know, the sinking apartments, buildings downtown. So I just wonder, at what cost are we, you know, trying to grasp progress? I mean, at what cost was Houston Homes willing to cut down a tree to progress for a little bit of money? What costs are we giving up the Auburn that everybody looked at and cherished over the years? So that's just kind of what I was thinking about and wanted to say, but nothing further.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Who else? Okay, we'll close citizens' communications. We certainly appreciate. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My bad. I'll reopen. No, it's no problem. I just didn't see your hand. I apologize.
Stephen McGentry, five-eight-one-eight-nine U.S. Highway four-thirty-one. I have grown up in Auburn and around Auburn my entire life. I consider Auburn my stomping grounds. Ever since I was a child, I remember, long before any of these apartment buildings were erected, I remember being able to walk from the Chevron that was downtown over to the McDonald's and being able to cut clear across. But that's not what I'm here to talk about today. Today, I'm here to talk about hypocrisy. So hypocrisy is something that we're all guilty of at times. First of all, I want to say, Bob Parsons, thank you earlier for your acknowledgement to the racial violence that has been done in this community and on this land. I think it's important to acknowledge those things. However, I think it's hypocritical to acknowledge those things without talking about Tyus D. Cobb, an Auburn man who was about my age, an African-American man murdered by Opelika Police Department, and also, Amari Justin Young murdered about a week later by Auburn police. So we have to be willing to look at that, and we have to be willing to say, well, if we're going to give an acknowledgement of the historical violence done to these people, then we also need to move forward in a way that is epithetical to changing these things so that way no more of these lynchings continue to happen today. On the topic of hypocrisy, chalk has been a long-held tradition on Tumer's Corner for political reasons as well as celebration reasons. And I was ejected from Tumer's Corner for using chalk on the corner. I'm sure everybody saw that in the news, I mean, you know, Auburn Plainsman. But anyway, that doesn't matter. The fact of the matter is, when we can see Christian writings, when we can see political writings on Tumer's Corner stay for days on end and not get washed off, but within an hour of my presence being there, using my First Amendment right to speak of something that is not only important but essential to be paid attention to, then it's a problem. And it's simply because it was of a political stance that nobody here agrees with, I'm sure. I mean, Zionism seems to be a very heavy component in Auburn. And on to my third topic of hypocrisy. I want to thank everybody in Auburn who's organized so valiantly against what Houston Homes has done to these eagles. I think it's absolutely a travesty, but if we want to talk about corporations in our, if we want to talk about corporations in our community that are causing harm, we should also be willing to address MDT Armor, which is an Israeli company who builds the standard light armored vehicle for the IDF, who has been committing a genocide in Gaza not since October seventh, but for a very long time now, ever since nineteen forty-eight and even before. So if we want to talk about hypocrisy, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Shut down MDT.
Thank you. Who'll be next? All right, I won't miss anybody. Okay, we'll close citizens' open forum. And will the council have any questions they'd like to have answered, any comments they'd like to make?
I do. I, tonight, I think I've heard a lot of different comments about a lot of different subjects tonight, and I think the one that really, I guess a question that was asked by the young lady, and I can't remember her name, with the light blue shirt on in the back. She talked about historic communities that's being destroyed, has been destroyed. And she wanted to know what the city can do to, I guess, I guess it's too late to preserve these communities because a lot of them are already gone. But I myself have calls all the time about affordable housing. So I would like for the council or the city manager to address what is being done about providing affordable homes. And it's almost like everybody that comes to me now, they have a concern with where are we gonna go? We're losing a lot of our citizens. We got children, myself, I got grandkids, and they would like to live here in Auburn. I don't know if, you know, it's gonna be affordable enough in the long run for them to live here. I've lived in Auburn all my life. I'm sixty-four years old, so that's a long time. And I've seen a lot of changes since I've been here in Auburn. So I'm good, so I'm bad. And every time I hear people talking about affordable housing, it's sort of touching. It really, it really does a lot. And only if you've been in the, if you've been in my shoes, you can understand where I'm coming from with this. So it is an issue that needs to be addressed. I don't know what we would call affordable housing anymore. There's been several meetings about affordable housing. No, it's impossible to build houses now for fifty, sixty, and seventy thousand dollars. It is. The property I live on now, and I live on Williams Street, my dad bought that land for three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I know today, no way possible. Cost of living though went up, everything's gone up, law money gone up and everything. But there's still, to somebody now, three-hundred, well, back then, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars was a lot for my parents. They liked to lost the land twice, trying to pay them three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So what, what can us as the city council, as a city, can do to make it affordable for everybody to live in Auburn? Not just the rich, not just the students. I have nothing against students, I got them all around me. I come from a historic neighborhood, they're everywhere. They, it looked like every time somebody come to the city council now, it's about growth in their neighborhoods. So I'd like to see her question answered. If we, you may not can answer it tonight, but I think by December the third, this young lady deserves some answers along with other people who, who has some concern about affordable homes. So if we can make that one of our priorities as a city to just address those issues because it's in our minds, but we don't bring it up a lot, and it needs to be brought up.
Anybody else on the council have a follow-up to that? Ms. Crouch, is that something that we would have an opportunity to work on in the next two weeks to provide some kind of
Your, I think, if I'm understanding Councilperson Taylor correctly, it's a very complicated deal. One of the things brought up is, the house in question is in a neighborhood conservation zone with every attempt to preserve the neighborhood, but when property owners choose to sell longtime family members, that is beyond the control of the government. The challenge with affordable housing is vast, and as Councilwoman Taylor eloquently put it, she's not sure just yet what we're defining as that. I mean, you've got the rental side, and then you've got the homeownership side. For nearly forty years, the city has built affordable homes and done second mortgages and other things that we can. We too run into challenges with acquiring property that allows us to do that at an affordable level. And I'm, one of our biggest challenges is, we can't spend city funds to acquire property and then turn around and gift it. We're not allowed to do that to individuals. We've got some legal ramifications. However, we have a very creative staff, we're looking at a lot of programs. But if you want a comprehensive response to that, December third would not be adequate time. But I would like individually for you to give me some more direction about the things, and I can meet with Councilwoman Taylor, but about what you have in mind that you want addressed, then I can give you a better timeline. At the end of the day, you know, we've built affordable houses recently, and Councilwoman Taylor's also very accurate, and those, you know, they're expensive to build, and we're not adding a profit on those. That goes to our North Auburn Housing Development Corporation. You approved, as the planning commission did, and pivoted with a private sector development. Councilwoman Taylor bumped me about that this week, saying, you know, I have citizens and constituents who want to buy houses from them. We do have a private developer that is trying to keep houses at a very reasonable price. And, you know, we're working with them to try to make that happen, and they've done a great job of trying to do that. So certainly looking at it, in the rental housing front, the city is not involved in rental housing. The housing authority is, but the city is not. And so there's a lot of nuances. So happy to address, and I may sit down with Councilwoman Taylor and get a more structured thought in terms of some things that she's hearing, to be sure we're kind of ticking all those boxes. But December third would be a little quick for us to be able to unilaterally address that.
The Tucker Heights homes that we built, that was all from CDBG Resources, correct?
In essence, federal government passed through dollars. Yes. But, you know, let's remind you, those folks still have first and second mortgages, you know, they, you know, go through credit counseling, and the folks that were made homeowners there still have to be able to get a loan, and all of those folks did, so.
And when you say Tucker Heights, I want everybody to understand, there's seven homes, there's seven homes, seven. Okay, so we ain't talking about a whole village of houses. There's seven homes we talking about Tucker Heights. Now, and I understand that the monies that we get through the, the development grant and everything, which is probably not enough money, so I guess Al, he does what he can do with, with that money as far as building houses. But I just think that we, it's something just got to be done, because as a city council person, you know, you get tired of people make, almost saying it's the city fault that there's no affordable housing being built. So if we need to clarify that, then let's clarify it, but not just clarify it to kind of tailor, but clarify it to the community. So, so, you know, whatever we need to do as a city, because there's also been, I know you can't put mobile homes in the city limits anymore, so, which is a source of a mobile homes in the city limits anymore, so, which is a source of affordable housing. So, you know, we gotta come up with something. That's, you know, that is my thought on it.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Appreciate your passion, your interest in that topic, and, uh, we look forward to spending some time talking about that. Anyone else? Yes, Max?
Mr. Mayor, regarding item nine B that we denied unanimous consent, we'll try to have more discussion on that at the next council meeting, uh, more clarification. Uh, not just then, but between now and then, so I just want, uh, citizens that are concerned with item nine B know that they can reach out to me. Um, or we'll have more discussion regarding that, uh, at the next, at the next meeting. Secondly, I, I just want to commend, uh, you, Mayor, Mayor Prenton Whitten, on your efforts with the, uh, with the Eagles and what you guys have done. And I, I rest easy knowing that you guys have, uh, are, are at the helm of this, and you will continue to follow through. So, I appreciate all the efforts that you guys and the leadership you've shown through this, and, uh, certainly, uh, apologetic for what at all has happened. Uh, and appreciate what you guys are doing, and thank you.
Any other comments, question? Yes, ma'am.
Um, Ms. Crouch, and while we, um, are on the topic of Eagles, I know there have been quite a few conversations, um, questions directed at me. Um, and I'm, I know out on, um, various outlets about what the city has the ability and authority to do with regards to, um, a developer's business license and/or building permits. Is there an opportunity to speak to that and what the city has rights and availability?
Yes, we, we have one of our city attorneys here, Paul Clark, in, in, brought overviewed as, as a stated, this is a federal permit that was stated multiple times tonight. The city has no jurisdiction over that. But when it comes to their development permits, it's a different requirement level. If they meet our development criteria, we, they must be approved. So, this is a long-ago-approved zoning in two thousand and five, not recently, and there's been some changes and modifications in five. And twenty-seventeen's Plan Development District on top of that, which means the council has no legal authority whatsoever to modify its zoning. Only the applicant can. It's a contract for zoning. The applicant, um, can request that the council allow it to be amended, but the council has no authority, the Planning Commission has no authority to change the zoning whatsoever. So, the land use plan also plays no role in that because it was already annexed, zoned, and with a Plan Development District overlay many years ago, and has been modified since. So, that, that is one component of it that is challenging. But any violation of federal permit, whether it's wetlands, which are regulated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, whether it's if, and nobody here is saying a federal permit was issued, um, for removal of the nest. We saw that permit before they were released to do any kind of work out there. That is between the property owner and the federal government, same with wetlands relative to, with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And we have no legal authority to shut them down or other ways for, otherwise for violation of, of any of those permitting standards. The federal government can choose to impose fines and take their own actions, but, um, with a business license, it's very delicate. The business license ordinance only addresses revocation if you don't pay taxes, and that has to go through the city council. If you're a house of entertainment and, and are violating certain health, safety, welfare issues, or if you deal in firearms or other deadly weapons. Those are the only revocation terms that were granted by the state of Alabama. I'll have our city attorney go a little bit deeper.
Uh, the business license requirements within the city of Auburn are set forth very clearly in our code. And our code is based on, uh, the payment of business license fees and the production of certain documents uh, to satisfy base-level requirements for doing business in the city. Uh, this issue about whether or not a city can revoke a business license uh, has not been addressed a lot in Alabama case law, but it has been addressed, and the cases that are out there are very clear. When a city does not have standards that would allow it to revoke a business license for what we would generally call corporate bad acts, then you simply can't do it. Uh, our, uh, ordinance within the city of Auburn does not afford that power to the city council. Uh, you can, as, uh, the city manager stated, revoke a business license on limited terms, primarily related to the payment of taxes and some other very narrow, uh, cases that deal with very specific businesses, but not in relation to a builder or developer like Houston Holmes. Similarly, uh, in relation to building permits, uh, our city code adopts the International Building Code. And the International Building Code very specifically dictates how business, how building permits are issued and regulated. And within the International Building Code, there are only three reasons that a building permit, uh, can be revoked or suspended. Those are if the permit was just issued in error, it was just a clerical mistake. The permit was issued based on incorrect, inaccurate, or incomplete information, and that would relate to the plans that are submitted uh, for the regulation and the, the approval of those plans through our city's Inspection Services Department. Or number three, the permit was issued in violation of an ordinance or a regulation or provision of the Building Code. So, those are all tied to the specifics of the International Building Code that we have adopted by reference.
Paul, real quick, though, on the land disturbance side.
Yeah.
How does that differ?
Yeah. In relation to land disturbance, there's, uh, really only one permit that we require of developers, and that is a timbering plan. Um, that is developed very early on in the planning process through our, and approved through our planning procedures. Uh, that was submitted in relation to this particular phase, uh, for Heritage Ridge and was approved. Uh, and that is, uh, that plan, that timbering plan is, uh, designed to make sure that timber isn't removed in such a way that it causes runoff or other, uh, damages to other vulnerable or to adjacent properties. Um, so, i, if, once the permit is issued, uh, there's only very, there's very little that the city can do to revoke a building permit. What I understand from our Inspection Services Department, that in relation to this phase, uh, of Heritage Ridge, there are no building permits issued. Uh, and there's no provision within, uh, the International Building Code that we have adopted that would allow the city to, uh, enact a moratorium on building permits to a specific developer within the city.
The same for the remainder of land disturbance to the development staff. We've issued no permitting to build the subdivision. There's preliminary plat approval was issued through the Planning Commission in June where this was brought up, um, about Eagles nesting. A statement was read at that time by the Planning Director who made it very clear that this was a federally-related issue. Um, but no permitting has been issued whatsoever for anything other than the timbering plan. Um, we don't even have full submittals of any of the rest of it for grading of the subdivision or anything else, just the timber removal. However, if tomorrow those are submitted, we will continue our review as we are required to do for all development in Auburn. And regardless of what's going on in tandem with fish and wildlife, the city will continue to review the plans as we have a responsibility to do. And nothing would hold up the, the permitting process further for development of this subdivision unless, um, it didn't meet some city criteria as established.
Correct.
And so can this body at any time in the future, um, look to research ways, if the bo, if this body chose to, um, ways that we could have further safeguards in the future added to ordinances or created an ordinance? Is that allowed by this body?
Specifically in relation to business licenses, that is a possibility for the council to add to our current business license regulations and, and empower itself to revoke business license based on corporate bad acts, but that's simply not in the current business license process.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a definition on what constitutes a bad act?
Yeah, the ordinances that have been reviewed in Alabama appellate case law, um, are similar but different. Uh, most of them require a showing that the corporate bad acts have become such that it creates a nuisance to the public. Uh, you see these types of cases involving nightclubs, uh, or other drinking establishments where, uh, police are required to respond to multiple uh, reports of gunfire, multiple fights. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, safety concerns from neighbors. Um, but the criteria for, there's no specific criteria for what has to be within a city's, uh, business license revocation process, uh, but could be crafted such that the council is, um, if it meets the criteria of the case law that's out there, the few cases that are out there, we can certainly craft that to the council's pleasure.
Yes, ma'am, Stowe.
Okay, I, I guess I'm on, on the roll tonight. I wanna, I wanna clarify something to, for the council and also for the audience out here. Um, and I don't think that she's in the audience right now. I think she left. But I just want to clarify, and I wanted to go on record since it went, went on record, that, that, uh, five of us council members were thieves, uh, and we stole. Well, I, I am not a thief. So, I want that to go on record, because there may be some of y'all out there that don't realize what she was saying tonight about the, uh, short-term rentals. And we were called thieves up here, and I don't appreciate being called a thief, because I am not a thief, and I have not stole anything. Now, if you disagree with a decision that I made, that does not make me a thief, because I think most thieves, if, normally, if thieves are behind bars. So, I'm sitting here on the council, so I'm not behind bars. So, uh, I was, I was pretty offended by that, because my name was called Taylor. It, she said Taylor first. So, uh, I just want to clarify that I am not a thief. So, the rest of them can defend their own self, but I'm just letting y'all know I'm not a thief.
Anyone else on the council have a comment? Yes, Kelly.
Uh, expanding on what you had to say about, uh, the possibility of, of strengthening ordinances or resolutions or whatever it is. Is, is it possible to simply say something along the lines of, if, if, uh, there's a violation of, of city, state, or federal law, is that sufficient for us to consider a revocation?
I, I don't think that the council could, uh, could be that general. You know, we here in the state of Alabama, we follow, uh, a, a legal theory called Dillon's Rule. And that means that cities in the state of Alabama only have those powers that are delegated to them very specifically by the state legislature. And so, the cities in the state of Alabama are allowed to enforce, uh, to adopt by reference and enforce as violations against the city's certain misdemeanors, but those are set forth in state code. Uh, the ci, the city could not enforce all state laws or create a mechanism for punishing those even through a business license revocation for all state laws. Certainly, uh, the state has no authority to, nor has it delegated to any city within, uh, the state of Alabama the ability to enforce or punish the violation of federal law. And so, there are certain limited things we could craft to go into the business license revocation, powers that this council has that would expand upon that process, but it, it would not be that far.
Okay. Thank you. Good question. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to address what Ms. Susan Bolt got up here and said. She primarily attacked me in my character, to do with a short-term rental. And that's something I take very serious. I don't know why, I guess Susan's gone, but, uh, my Bible tells me that a good name is rather be chosen than great riches. And I've always had a good name. I've served the city for some thirty, almost thirty-eight years. I was in police office for twenty-six of those years, risked my life. Missed a lot of times with my family, but I'm not complaining about it. I, I did what I signed on to do. But you can do a lot of things to me, but don't ca, don't attack my character. I don't have a lot of riches. Uh, but I do have a good name. My family has a good name. Been in Auburn since the eighteen hundreds. And, and, and when you talk about a Dawson, they may call him crazy, but, uh, that's about the worst you'll say about it. And I'm very disappointed she can get up here and, and attack my character like that. I hope, I, I made me really angry to start with, but then I got to think about it. If, if she would do that, she don't, she don't really know me no way. But, uh, if she, she, I'll sleep fine tonight. I hope she can sleep well, because she, she honestly, she just, I, 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 I don't know. Something's happened to those folks' mind over S T R stuff. I don't know. But, uh, uh, if you want to attack me, it's something I do on this, uh, council, that's fine, but don't, uh, don't attack my character.
Hey, that's, no, no, you can't speak out like that.
You have a good night too, young man.
You, please don't speak again, okay? Tommy, we're, we're certainly proud to have you with us.
Thank you, man.
And you have served this community for a long time, and your character is impeccable.
Thank you.
And, uh, you've been a great servant of this community through all your roles.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, I guess I'll throw in here, um, I'm not a thief either. It's a, it's a difficult argument to hear, excuse me, to hear, um, people who, uh, are on the wrong side of the short-term rental ordinance. It's very difficult to craft any ordinance where everybody is happy. I think, um, the repetition of your grievance, week after week, weakens your argument so that most of the time that Ms. Bolt or, um, Mr. Wilkins shows up here to complain over and over again about the short-term rental ordinance, it, it, uh, it cumulatively loses its, cumulative loses its power. And I think most people, um, uh, I, I can speak for myself. I, I, I'm satisfied with the crafting of that ordinance. We did the best we could to please a large number of people in this city, and I can sleep at night knowing that my neighbors are very satisfied with the decisions that I represented and that I represented their views.
Anyone else? Certainly, again, I appreciate the passion of our community. Um, I appreciate the manner in which our citizens came for us tonight and, and spoke. And I'm grateful that, uh, we live in a free country that allows these kind of interactions with one another. Auburn's not perfect, um, but it's a great place to live, that a lot of people desire to live here. And we'll continue to try to get better and better and, uh, and try to do the best we can to make the best decisions on behalf of everybody in our community. Uh, I certainly wish everybody in here a happy Thanksgiving, and, uh, if you're traveling to be with family, uh, please be careful, and I hope you have a rich, rich time, uh, with those that you love next week, and I hope you take time to be thankful for all the many blessings that you have, and then certainly we have in this community. Is there a move to adjourn?
There's a move.
We're adjourned.